I'd like to call our meeting to order and this is our work session before our meeting on Thursday, which will be at Millenburg South Elementary School. And we're just gonna go over our items for the month. Uh, the first thing, um, is the minutes from the power board meetings. And, um, everyone got a copy of these in their packets, so if there's any changes that need to be made, um, we will do so on Thursday. And the next thing is our, um, items on the agenda. Um, also if there's any additions, we will do these on Thursday as well.
What is it now?
If we have any additions to the agenda.
For Thursday?
For Thursday. And then, uh, the treasures reports.
This should be standard this month, uh, really didn't say that for large, uh, debt service payment this, this past month, so that was really kinda in our accounts pay up otherwise. That's what we're doing on that one.
We had a lot of bills tonight.
Boy, turn that down, like I hear nothing but that.
It's loud.
Yeah. That's what we were looking at.
Yeah, I know it.
Are there any questions on the treasures report? If not, we'll go down to bills and salaries.
This month it's about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, most of it's general fund, there's only, uh, twenty thousand dollars in debt service, and, uh, fifty-six dollars is pay, daycare funds. And then, uh, significant bill is just Hope Mifflin, a textbook purchase.
And if there's nothing on that, we will go on to school bills.
This month is, should be the start of the, the new format, they ran it up the new soft, uh, excuse me, out of the new software. So if there's something that you see that you like with that, or that you don't like, please let me know, so we can try to adjust. There's a, there's a myriad of, uh, reports that can be done, but if there's something that you'd like to see differently, please let me know and I'll look to see if we can
So now, some of the teachers have a certain beginning balance. Is that something that was renewed July 1? It's saying, uh, this is for the end of the year, or the end of the month, July 31st?
If they had funds in their accounts, then, then they do, they do roll over annually.
Okay, so maybe they didn't use it on the students this past year, so then they would start with the balance for this next school year? Is there anything else? If not, we'll move down to the superintendent report.
Thanks Chairman Rager, board members, there's just a few things. First days have gone well, I'll go ahead and say that, uh, similarly really well. Transportation, food, principals have reported good things, so, uh, I think we're off to good start. I'll elaborate more on that Thursday, hopefully I can say exactly the same thing Thursday. But I'm very, very proud of all the work, I mean, it's easy to say, but it's so much work goes into opening the school, so, a lot of folks deserve a lot of thanks. Also wanted to, uh, make sure you had this, Sheriff, we gave, if we all have this right, this is for a training opportunity, September 11th at Apollo High School, and if you'd like for any help, uh, within, have any help registering, just let Sheriff know, she'll be glad to take care of it. There's, uh, first page is, is the, the, the actual meeting, and then on the second page, there's an extra session you can go to if you want to get there early. Again, she'll be glad to help you with any of this, just let her know. And I, I wanted to, uh, last year, at the beginning of the year, I really, we use work sessions to let folks come in and talk to you about different things, and I kinda got away from that for some reason, so I wanna get back into that. And I've asked Matt to, tonight, to, uh, talk a little bit about some of the things we're doing with safety, cause I'm sure that, I'm getting a lot of questions about that, I'm sure y'all do too. So I wanted Matt to be able to kinda go over a few things, so, you know, the public will know, and you guys will know some of the things that we have done, or may need to be working on.
Eric can't read. Pardon? He can't read.
Oh, okay, I'll read it out loud though, that's gonna be okay. Well, as Mr. Davis has already started, um, to let you know, we were talking, and he wanted to make sure, again, that you all know all of the things that are going on, and it has been two years of all-out team effort. Everyone in the entire district, at every level, in every, every position, everywhere, has either chipped in to help with improving school safety, has come up with ideas for school safety, has looked on the internet and, you know, relayed information back. And, and we've just been in this constant process of improving everything we're doing in order to keep our, our students and our faculty and, and the general public safe when it comes to being in and around our schools. And the list is not exhaustive by any means, but it is just the most recent things that we have looked at or improved upon, and I'd like to go ahead and go through those with ya, I'll just read them out. If you have questions, stop me, Mr. Davis may hop in if there's a certain point that he wants to make sure and clarify, and then, at the end, um, you can hold questions at the end, or you can jump right in. We'll just go for a few minutes here and see how that goes, but we did just wanna let you know, when you're out there talking to the public, that you can say you would not believe everything that's going on, if, if you don't know all of these items. So, as you know, we added an SRO this year, which was tremendous, and there's no better way for us to spend our money than on SROs in our schools. It provided us the opportunity to reorganize where they were assigned, and we now have feeder patterns created, from South Elementary to South Middle, to Greenville Elementary, and on the other side of the county, the same thing, where we have officers that are dedicated to go to those schools, and then the middle schools as well, and then up into the high school, as, as you know. Um, really like the team effort we're seeing there, um, all of our SROs are communicating, working together, problem solving, and, and doing a lot of stuff that is just through their expertise of keeping our kids safe, and staff safe. We have new cameras and servers being installed in all of our schools on a priority basis. We don't talk a lot about specifics on school safety in public, but we can tell you just about generals. I wouldn't tell you where the cameras are located, obviously, but it's, it is okay to talk about school safety when it comes to this setting. The, both high school campuses are, are in good shape, there's been some addition to West Campus, as you recall, we did the tech wing, which was, um, overdue. The East Campus, we've got a couple tweaks to go, it would appear that we're gonna go ahead and upgrade the server over there, which is the brain of the whole system, that allows us to rewind, look at things, um, zoom in better, that kind of thing, maybe some more cameras over there. North Middle took care of their camera system last year, South Middle got an all-new camera system this summer, and the newer stuff is just unbelievable, it is so much nicer than the older outdated technology. Um, we're heading to Longest next, it has the most out-of-date system in place, it still works fine, and they can do what they need to do, but we do wanna work, our tech guys kinda prioritize that with us, and we're in constant communication about it.
Any auditing, any ways of auditing the cameras? Like, uh, uh, somebody, whoever is watching it, give us a once a week, or twice a week, kind of an audit?
Interesting, that's interesting.
The companies who does for us, they give us, depending on how much need I have, how much money I want to spend, they give you an audit. Where, first shift or second shift, in this case, you know, and, real life, real picture, if person is in uniform, did they make a right ticket?
Interesting.
It's, uh, you know, if you want, I'll forward you a couple examples.
Yeah, let's talk about that more after.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it's just, it's on nobody, it's no certain time, they're doing it from wherever they are, and you get a report.
Yeah, how many vehicles are in, in the parking lot late at night at West Campus, things like that?
Nobody's watching the cameras every day anyways.
Yeah, that's interesting, thank you Raji, and, and everyone, please, we want you to chime in, we want you to give some, some feedback. All of our external doors now are moving towards having magnetic card readers, everyone that we use, there's still a couple that have a pushpad on there, South Elementary, for example, and now that we're close to having all the doors we want, there's wants and needs, we needed a certain number of doors accessible for teachers and, and flow, but now we're to a point where we're able to go ahead and finish them all out, we've got them almost all complete. Um, that's really big too, because as you know, the card readers keep track of who's coming and going in those doors, when they come and go, so that's a big piece for us too. And that actually helps out maintenance too, they're not cutting keys and, and replacing keys all the time. The, all of our classroom doors are locked throughout the day, including during instruction. It's a bit of a hassle, but it's certainly a, a, a big safety need, and that's one that takes a little while for us to get there, and it goes back to thanking our teachers and our administrators and everyone for making sure that they've conveyed the reason why it needs to be done, and then immediately you get compliance once people see the reason. We have emergency backpacks that are stocked and restocked and replaced as needed in all of our classrooms. We have been purchasing quite a few radios and distributing those to schools, there's different levels of radios, there's radios that communicate with 911 Office and inter-schoolwide, there's other radios that communicate with Sheriff's Office and, and all that, we have some of those, and then there's smaller radios that the schools can utilize just to talk to each other within the buildings, you know, they just need their own sets, so, we have been purchasing quickly because we know the importance of being able to communicate, um, with each other in, in a situation. And then all of the, all of that's accessible from the board here too. We have panic buttons being installed in all of the schools, are you familiar with what we're going on there, underneath the, underneath the, the desks? All of our entrances are now having cameras and buzzers installed for public entry during school hours. Um, Chad and I are gonna be going around to get the last few schools lined up to have those put in. Each school's a little different on what they need, but what we're doing is we wanna make sure that we have all of our external doors locked at all times. When someone comes during the day to get in, they push a button, the receptionist will see who that is at the door, will ask them their business, what they're here for, and then they scan them, and we're teaching them what to look for as far as suspicious behavior, and then scripts are being finished, and we'll be distributing those on Friday to our principals to bring back to the schools, so that they can say, you know, welcome to our school, can I help you? Oh yeah, I'm here to see my third grade teacher, did you have an appointment? Sure. Um, okay, great, or if the person doesn't act right, what to say to kinda stall for a little bit, hang on, we're sending somebody to the front door in just a minute, when actually we're getting one of our law enforcement people to go up there, if they're, if they just don't seem to be acting right. Um, our receptionists, or receptionists, our, our front, our front door people, they know ninety-five percent of the people that are coming to the school on a regular basis. Hallways are named and labeled for quick reference, this is an interesting one, uh, when we had, we, we had a big end of the year drill last year, as most of you, I'm sure you all know, and I have that listed at the bottom, and we had all the different department agencies, we were doing it for real, 911, we were loading the buses in case we had to evacuate, and afterwards, Danny Vincent from KCSS, who's also referenced here, made the, the comment, you know, one more thing you could do would be to label all these hallways, and that way we would know where we were in case of an emergency. Mr. Davis said, you know what, let's get that done. You know what, it's done, it's amazing how quick people hop in, and that's been done without us telling them to do it, we've talked about it, communicated it, showed the purpose, next thing you know, you walk in the schools and all the hallways have been labeled. It's, it's, that's what I want to convey, is that no one is waiting around at the schools for someone to tell them what they need to do. Everyone is, we are all working on that. So, in addition to that, our external windows are being numbered, we, we've almost got that finished up, we'll talk more about that on Friday. That way, every room number is now on the outside of the window, so that the responders can see, and it's inside, so that if you're trapped in there and it's not your normal room, you'll know which room you're in. We're also having the numbers put inside the doors of the classrooms, they're always on the outside, but they may not be on the inside. I've, I've taught for years in a room, I probably didn't even know my own room number, and if I'm not in my own room, because I had to run to hide, I really don't know where I'm at. So if I'm on the cellphone, we wanna be able to say I'm in room 117, so, that is being taken care of as well. Um, all exterior doors are numbered outside and inside for emergency response, um, all classroom doors are numbered, I just said that. The external windows, you'll notice, on most of our schools are now covered with decorative appliques, have you seen that when you go up there? You know, the reason for that, obviously, if you, if you stop to look at that, those are one-way visibility barriers, so that if we do have somebody out there acting a little funny, or a little sketchy, and we're trying to get somebody up there, they don't see that we're in there, you know, it's that, let me in, let me in, no one's home, well I can see people right there, they can't see ya. So that gives us a little bit of extra time.
Now, all schools have those now?
They're getting there, we're getting there. A, a lot of this is moving towards, you know, full implementation. What else do we got? Entrances are planned for upgrades in schools to create portal vestibules in the ones that are needed. Um, Mr. Davis will have more information about that, I know he's been talking to you about it already. We have new heavy-duty doors that replace the external gym doors at both high school campuses, the ones that went out into the parking lot, those doors have been problematic for years, they've gone ahead and, and replaced those for us, and those are very secure now. We have ongoing district safety meetings that take place with all first responding agencies, as I mentioned, we had the full-scale emergency drill, and we plan for more of those, and all of our drills are performed above the recommend, recommended numbers. And really, all of our drills, I can share with you, are, are done with true intentionality. We're not just going through a drill. We're doing the drill, we're changing up the drill, um, we're, we're practicing as if it were real, instead of just going through the motions.
Yeah, I'll jump in, for example, today, I just happened to be in East at the right time, and they were getting ready to go to, do a drill, and, and they had a teacher, they just called somebody, said, you start a lockdown drill, and so the teacher uses the phone to do that, and then they, they hit the panic button on top of that, and, and I mean, it was quiet, and lockdown, and seconds. And so, you know, we didn't used to maybe do that as intentionally, mix it up, change things, during class changes, right at school starting, I've seen them do that, so, uh, we're doing a better job of that, instead of going through the motions to get a drill in, they mean something now, obviously, more than they did.
There's, um, we had our opening day focus on safety, um, Danny Vincent with KCSS was here, and presented to all of our employees about everything we're talking about, and the reason why, and, and different ways that you can be proactive, and, and really where we are now is focusing on, as always, relationship building, knowing our kids, knowing each other, and situational awareness. We're about as locked down as we can get, I mean, there's always more that you can do, but now it's the whole, do you have a weird feeling, and who is this person, and what's that backpack doing over there, out of place, that's where we are, that everyone is now on point, looking for, for things that might be suspicious, and doing something about it, calling it in, letting somebody know about it. And our SROs are stepping up, and they have been in the past, and they will continue to develop relationships with our kids and our, and our, our faculty, and they're teaching classes here and there, some more consistent than others, on healthy and safe behaviors, and I finished with that one, because that's really the most important thing that we can do, when it comes to school safety, is know our kids, know each other, and build relationships.
So, metal detectors?
Yeah.
Are we doing metal detectors, or is that on the plan?
No, not really, I think we talked about metal detectors, didn't we, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, metal detectors, yeah, I mentioned that a good while back.
So we're not gonna add those, we're not gonna install them?
No, we'll, we'll, how about we say we'll continue to look at that? At first, there was a big jump for everyone to do that, it sounded like, and then everyone backed way off. Well, now there are a couple of districts that are doing it in, in a couple of different places, so, a lot of what we're talking about is looking at it, you know, seeing if it meets our needs, and then continuing forward with that.
Between Longest and North Middle, that shared hallway?
Yes.
What's going on there? I've had, um, uh, uh, I think it was Brad Devine bring it to my attention, that something needed to be done there, because some people can exit and some people can't?
Yeah, I know. We had the architect look at it, and that's included in the portal vestibule conversation.
So it's something that's gonna be?
Definitely being looked at.
Yeah, it's being looked at, I don't wanna...
Move the door down and do some new things, that we want to be aware of, is ramps and...
I just don't wanna speak to money, like, yep, let's take care of that as you go.
And the buses, uh, busing the kids from east to west, we're still doing that?
Yeah.
Still bus the kids?
Yeah.
And how are we keeping them safe when they're leaving the building to get to the bus? I mean, it's happening more frequently if we're busing them across. Um, I know that was one of the concerns that I remember hearing, is, you know, you would have, if you had metal detectors, there's potential of kids standing outside and congregating, so, here's the same thing, they would congregate to get on a bus more frequently, because we're busing across campus, um, across...
What are you, what are you suggesting, I don't quite understand?
Oh, I think we should be back to two high schools.
Okay, well, that's not really what I'm talking about right now.
Well, I'm just asking, what are we gonna do about that? Because it is putting the kiddos at risk, right there, out in the open, right? Does it put them at risk?
We have supervision and surveillance equation present when the students are getting on the bus, and as well as off the bus, at each campus, and just something to keep in mind because of the, you mentioned two high schools, and not the gas, but you still have the tech wing, you would still be busing students over there for electrical programs and all the things that mention.
Yeah, high school, youth school always has seven to eight bodies outside.
But the configuration?
At each campus, yes, and then also, uh, and, and something that we've changed, uh, this year as well, is that in the, uh, prior in the past, we have been shuttling students over the larger group of the sophomore or so forth, in the afternoon, so Ms. Dukes and I began to speak to each other, uh, last year about, could we potentially look at saving costs and just beginning their day at West Campus, for those that are interested in those pathways. So we've actually started that this year, um, and so those students start their day there, and then they go back to East Campus and Aucklandwood, that seems to be going well. Now, we do have one bus at the end of the day, and that's just because of choir, we, our one choir teacher, we share between middle schools, and then as well at the, uh, high school, and so, we only have one period wing course is offered, so we do have some students that we bus over for that one period of course, and then there's a couple of trike kids that are on there as well that we have down, so, but it's a, we, the new plan this year seems to be working very well.
But overall, we're the only high school, probably in America, maybe the one place in Alaska that has one high school with two campuses, so, you know, when we're talking student safety, I mean, they are, you know, exiting the building more frequently than potentially any other high school, even though there's the students that will be, um, attending the tech center, but still, I mean, the way...
You got me thinking, you got me thinking, I mean, we got kids that go out to recess for elementary school.
Well, sure, but, and that's something to consider, but...
They're walking from the ALC over to North Middle to get lunches and breakfast.
Games.
I mean, you're right.
Football.
Anytime the kids are outside, I mean, they're, they're...
You're right, and then, is there a gate that goes between, like, high school concessions on West Campus back to the multipurpose room?
Oh my gosh.
Be, uh, in, inside the school?
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Cause I know I've been where, in the multipurpose room, and then there was a ballgame going on, and there was a lot of cross-traffic, um, multipurpose room folks were going and buying concessions, not a problem, but that there's the opportunity to mix there, and I didn't know if there was a gate.
Yes ma'am, but we also have, when there's home ballgames, we have band students, so they need to have access to the band room.
And the JRF C kids too.
Through there, and the, for OTC kids.
Or, or, but we have a lot of cameras.
I'm just curious, how's the clear backpacks going, or has that been?
With the mesh bags, that's used to be going well, I mean, we've had to replace some, uh, early on, but a lot of it is, is just speaking to the kids about, it's not about trying to stuff it pack, uh, full of everything to really get in that habit of using the lockers, um, so once they've gotten into the swing of things, that's going really well. Uh, our biggest hang-up right now are the pencil bags, um, been working with Walmart, they've been ordered for a little while, and we're still waiting for those to come in, but we're, we're making the appropriate accommodations where necessary until we do.
Thank you.
Big change over at North Middle, with student pickup in the afternoon. Those are, those are, those are big changes, that are...
We had probably gotten a white hat one day.
I don't know, anything about that.
I took pictures of these guys leaving their offices and standing in the middle of a school, and like, acting they're busy. I got some better things to choose than that.
And that concludes...
The day.
That concludes the day.
I may get a text message picture every day of the line, that's a second.
Go at 404, you'll be the last one, they're doing a lot better, today it was fast too.
Yeah. 405.
Yeah, we, we, talking about safety, we feel that's much safer, they're not out on the, on the road here, and, uh, kudos to you guys.
They're buzzing with bonuses today.
For doing it, that's, that's gonna, that's gonna be a big plus. Should've been done, uh, nine or 10 years ago, whoever was there then.
Well, we were waiting on you to do something.
And that does conclude, thank you Matt.
You're welcome.
And that does conclude.
Well, thank you, this is an impressive list.
Yes.
Question about the tax rate, is that gonna be on this Thursday's meeting?
That will be a special call meeting, uh, when we get to that, but that is something that there's, does seem to be enough of a, an interest in that, that we will begin the advertising on that, I think tomorrow.
Oh, so we're gonna advertise a special call meeting for the tax rate?
As we went over in our, in our conversation, yeah, the, the timeline that we gave you guys.
It's not on this month's agenda.
No, it's not, so, what it is, is you have, uh, we will advertise this Tuesday, then we advertise a second consecutive week on Tuesday again, and then, for the KRS statute, we have to have the hearing from seven to 10 days after the second advertisement, so we advertise to have the hearing on August 28th.
Okay, so that's when you're gonna have it, so does that mean you're taking compensating rate plus four percent?
Uh, we're, we're asking for four percent.
The compensating rate plus the four percent?
That's not what it is, they're different, totally different things, but we will be seeking, at least there's the interest there, as we've talked, to put out and, and look at the four percent, that's what we'll be asking for, ultimately it'll be your decision, uh, but that will be in a special call meeting, we'll have a hearing followed by a vote.
Okay, and that's August 28th is when that?
Correct.
That vote is, but it'll be in the paper tomorrow?
Correct.
And then also the next Tuesday? Um, personnel actions, is there anything on that we need to discuss? And if there's nothing of concern, I will go on down to the, uh, contract for hearing impaired services. Well, attendance and enrollment, sorry, but, he'll, he'll have that. I'm sorry, I forgot you, I forgot you.
Good morning, Lee.
You as well, sir. I've got some numbers, I'll, I'll just briefly share, basically, uh, first day compared to this year, very, last year, this year, um, look at that, I've always been big on last, last day numbers from the previous year, I think that gives us, and then, um, I'll give you a, a current enrollment for that specific day, and just to tell you how it could, it changes pretty quickly these first few days, um, we, we've added, um, thirty-three kids since the first day of school, so, I'll give you a...
Since the last day last year?
No, since the first day this year.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, we're still down a little bit from the last day last year, but not as bad, so, I'll give you those specifics on Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, now we're down to you.
So this is really straightforward, we had, uh, so the past several years, we employed a teacher over the year, and this year she's moved on, she's in a different county now, which left us without a teacher for sort of those kids, um, so we effectively did everything we could, I know for every rock, and we filed a, uh, family leaving contract with, her name is Becky Southern, and attached to the decision paper are the specifics of the contract, um, but we, you know, asking that we can enter into the contract with her, so we can get those very specific kids.
Any questions? If not, we'll go down and discuss the district assurances. Any questions on that? This is just something we do every year. Going down to the partnership with the Western Kentucky University, the Confucius Institute for the Chinese teacher at Millenburg North Middle.
Last year we, uh, did an initial contract, Ms. Chalmers and I, and, uh, it was a very lengthy contract, and it was a three-year agreement with Confucius Institute, but it was also, even though it was a three-year agreement, we could end it at any time. Um, in June, I contacted the Assistant Director, Charles Prophet, said, do we need to do a new contract? And he said the initial contract should be good enough. I talked, uh, a week or so ago to the director, since, uh, Mr. Prophet's no longer in that position, and we have to do, um, not a lengthy initial contract, just a renewal of the contract. And like I said, I inquired two months ago, was told we didn't have to, um, now we do, so that's the reason why we're here today, and it's just a short, uh... And it's just a short, uh, two-page contract where we just signed for the 18, 19 year. And, uh, also, um, there was some confusion where, you know, we're in agreement, we're entering agreement with Confucius, so, um, there's really, uh, no names on the contract, it's just that they're contracting us, uh, a teacher. So, kinda like what we do with school resource officers, we have a contract, not specifically with the officer, but with the police department. So, very similar. So, um, it's just that, uh, we already have, have picked up, uh, the teachers, the Jones and I both have, um, already have mine moved into the department, uh, where the teacher was last year, already furnished, um, she's ready to go, but just waiting for approval of the, of the contract, and she can start on Friday. So that's where we're at.
So he starts this Friday?
Yeah. Yeah, if, uh, if you all approve the contract, uh, on Thursday evening, then she can start on Friday.
Any questions? So there's no cost to our district at all?
No cost to the district, no. No, it's a very good program. We were successful last year, uh, we want to, to renew that, you know, and, uh, basically, when we get a, uh, a, a free certified teacher and a, and an opportunity to, to actually have some cultural classes, then I think we, it's a really, really, really good deal for us.
Thank you. And this goes along for the second for the Greenville Elementary as well? Yes. Um, down to, um, board policy, 09.15, student fee approval.
Uh, yes, this, this is just what we do every year, but I do need to tell you that this is totally my error. On the, the decision paper, you were saying there were some fees that were printed out with that that should not have been on there. The fees that you should consider are two separate documents. They should, the ones that say 2017, 18 year, that should've been deleted when they were on. And also been changed out.
Okay.
But I just wanna say, you had, there was a copy floating on that, it's not the correct fees, but you didn't have...
Okay.
And I would like to second that it was totally, totally nobody's fault.
I'll take the blame and the credit.
All right. Any questions on the fees?
Do you see that you have any Confucius Institute? Are they sharing?
Well, it's two separate ones, but it's the same information, just for two separate schools.
Okay. Cause that would last your, living there, pretty all the time, and you really have a, a Greenville sign?
It was South Middle and North Middle.
Okay, so, but we're not living there for sure? It's all, is that how many, how many did you buy?
I don't guess, it was something of the hours she could work, and then the students, there was too many students.
My question was, there's an agenda item for the, um, Chinese instructor at Greenville Elementary, and I think last year, there was one that was shared between schools because of hours. So, is Greenville getting their own individual one, or is this the remaining hours? Because...
This is, just like last year, it's the second teacher that teaches one period at North Middle in the afternoon, because of the number of, of classes that they have. Uh, they are required, and they have a maximum number of hours they can teach. So North Middle needed a second teacher to do that last period of the day, so she starts out her day at Greenville and teaches the majority of the day with us.
So we have to have two separate contracts, so it'll be the same person?
Yes, but it's no cost.
But it's the same individual?
There are two teachers.
Two teachers?
One full-time at North Middle, and then one time teaches the majority of the day at Greenville, but if travels to North Middle for the last period of the day.
All right, so we'll go on down to the course code addition approval from the state.
All right, I guess the, the state has given us new course codes that we had to follow elementary through high school, and, um, for our content areas, and we have had a request from elementary levels that they add, be able to add conduct citizenship grade. There is not a state course code for that, and so we would have to use the course code 909999, which indicates that it's not a state course code, but a district set course code. And in order to do that, we have to have board approval to have a 909999 course code.
What was that number again?
That's right, 90999.
So is this not something we're already doing?
They had that in the past, but because there's new course codes, now they can't put it on the gray cards without approval of this district set 909999.
Right. I wonder why the state previously was doing, then didn't wanna do it? Is that what you're saying? So now we are creating our own, essentially?
We can't put anything on, it's mine, they're saying, you can't put anything on, uh, gray cards unless they have a course code. Can you speak to that?
But if we were doing it before, if the state was allowing it, right?
Yeah, they cleaned up...
And then they, and then it went away?
They cleaned, they went through and they cleaned up all the course codes. It goes from high school down. We can create course codes on our own that over, that will meet the requirements of the catalog from K to E. What can happen is if schools create a lot of course codes on their own, over time, they get confused on which course code, they could get confused, which could end up impacting transcripts and things like that. If a student moves from one school district to another school district, we want to all be using the same course codes, is what the whole point of it is, really. Now, we still have the opportunity to open up ones if we need to, but we're gonna make sure we do that on a regular basis.
Yeah, on a case-by-case basis.
But I wonder why the state had it go away? If it was something before, why did they not think it was essential now?
Dukes, Mr.?
And the course codes are content-based. This will be a citizenship conduct grade instead of a content-based grade.
Why should we approve the board number? All of the boards? Why the board approve?
Because it's the district adding a course code to the, the course code list. And so that, I guess it lets the state know that the district set this code and they did set this code. It's probably just that if they do a sort of that at the state level, they can tell the difference between codes that are set by districts and codes that are set by the state.
They're gonna, they're gonna be tracking accessibility, but as we get into the new accountability system, more, I'll explain more as, as we get in there. The state wants to make sure that kids of all racist, diverse levels are having the same opportunity to take the same classes, and that we aren't creating a bunch of different classes for their kids.
And also, you know, we've had to submit, uh, how long different content areas are gonna last, like how long will that class be, how long, I have to submit all that. Now, the state's kind of tracking all that kind of information, too.
We did, it did not impact us very much. We were already tight. We did not have a bunch of open course codes out there. Some other districts did it, and that's really where it came from. It was really a quick cleanup for us, it was not a big deal at all.
So they just sort of standardized the course codes, and then you have to do this code if you wanna add anything to what they're standardized listening to.
So we've added this. Are there any other ones that we have with the 909999?
Not this time, it's a different course.
Thank you. Down to the contract between Coca-Cola, um, and Yellenburg County High School.
Uh, thank you. This, this contract will allow, uh, the high school to work with Coca-Cola, Owensboro, and, um, Elizabeth Town, excuse me, and what they'll do in order, uh, they'll get a, a new scoreboard out of the deal, basically. That's what, that's how they gotta do these, these, uh, agreements.
And the commission?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So what, we're gonna serve Coca-Cola products, and then we get a new scoreboard? Is that what that is?
Yes, ma'am. And the commission's off of the, uh, the sales of, of those, so it's...
Is there any cost, cost to us?
No, ma'am. So they, they bring in the product, and then whatever is sold, you get the commission from the product.
And there's no cost to us?
No, ma'am.
Well, we need a new scoreboard out the baseball field. And I think that was, that one says what, RC on it? What's at the baseball field? It's got some lights missing. I spoke to Mr. Fleming about it, and it has some lights missing, so like, you can't tell if you're at the fifth inning or the sixth inning. You know what I'm talking about, Ms. Fleming?
I do, ma'am.
Where are we with that?
Um, as soon as Mr. Hancock and I can get a date with Mr. Davis about some, uh, dates that we need for our softball and baseball facilities, that's, that's where we're at with that.
Well, I know, I talked to Mr. Fleming back in May, and maybe he talked to Mr. Hancock. Just a couple bulbs is what I thought, but it was an RC bulb, board or something, so they maintain all that?
They have not maintained that up, up till November.
Oh, okay. Hey, so are we gonna have to maintain that key of this board, the new one, this scoreboard?
We already contracted with Coca-Cola, this is a continuation of contract, so this is not our first scoreboard from him. So, we've already been keeping up with this scoreboard.
Keep up with the board over some of them.
So they're gonna come in and install it and everything?
Yes.
We'll move on down to the KSBA-KU rate intervention with the Public Service Commission.
Basically, El Genie and KU have approached the Public Service Commission again on a rate, rate hike. Uh, this is something we've done in the past with KSBA. KSBA has been able to implement, uh, carve-outs with KU and El Genie in order to get these, uh, rates so they don't affect schools as heavily. Fortunately, our district has been able to keep, uh, our usage down such that we've been able to keep our, our electric expenses pretty much flat, very minimal increase of, of electric costs over time, so, uh, we've been very fortunate. I think it's a, a good move, cause they have, uh, worked with, worked with them in the past and have been able to head off some of these increases.
If not, we'll go down to the, um, review of procedures, CO5.31, A P1, school facilities conditions of use.
We previously consolidated, uh, excuse me, not consolidated, we, we had to separate